29th, 2020, we all rise and salute the flag. Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, I can just state before the beginning of the meeting, we're going to ask, and this goes for you councilors, if we can keep our, and I know there's going to be some conversation, if we can keep our comments brief, recognize that we're already an hour and forty minutes behind, and be respectful of each other's time, but also be cognizant of what's back and forth. Please use the raise hand function if you wish to speak, I will be able to manage that, and let's have a great meeting, thank you.
Are you sure?
Roll call the members, Councilor Gino?
Okay.
Here, here, Councilor Guanasso?
Yeah.
Here, Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito?
They can hear me.
Morabito has, he says he's muted, he's here. You hear thumbs up, Counselor? Okay.
Councilor Morabito is here, Councilor Novoselfski?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Rotundo?
President.
Here, Councilor Serino?
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti?
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith?
Yeah.
Here, forum is present. First item on the agenda is the Ways and Means Committee report.
Council, Council Visconti? Oh, sorry, Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee met this evening at four thirty this afternoon, and we went through the entire budget. As we, as we have done for the past approximately five meetings, there were some cuts made, and there were some items that were left intact, or there was a question as to if they were union positions or not union positions, there was a question if there was federal or state money involved. It was a, you know, a long meeting, and I would like now to call the, the city clerk to read off the cuts that were made, and after that, we'll vote on the entire budget, the budget with, without the cuts. Madam Clerk?
So, Counselor Powers, would you like me to read the ones that failed, but just the ones that passed?
The ones that failed.
You gotta read them all.
So, one at a time?
Okay.
One at a time.
Okay.
Oh, whenever you want to.
Yeah, we gotta vote individually on each one of them, and some people might want to change their vote from the way they voted in subcommittee.
Right.
Alright, so the first one is as follows. This was Department 125-Human Resources, page two dash thirteen, part-time salaries, the amount of seventeen thousand dollars.
What was the, what was the, what did the committee voted out as?
That was, that failed.
That failed, okay, so do we want to poll the councilors?
You have to.
So, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
We've already taken a vote on it.
Roll call vote? Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President on 125 Human Resources, two dash three, part-time salaries, I'd like to move that ten thousand dollars be appropriated for that account.
Ten thousand dollars be appropriated?
For the account is the twenty, is the 2021 salary, so it's going to be cut fifteen thousand instead of seventeen. What position is that, Ira? Line number two on that list that was given out, 125 Human Resources, part-time salaries. Actually, I'd like to amend that to make it fifteen thousand. A deduction of, a reduction of ten thousand from the recommended.
That should have been done at subcommittee.
Well, you tried, you know, everybody, everybody was going over each other, and we didn't get a chance to speak. So, I make the, you know, we still have a right to make these changes, Counsel. That's why we're in, hold, committee in a hole. For Counsel, we can make these changes, and it's appropriate.
Alright guys, please use your raise hand function.
Who's, who's allowed that? That's not part of our rules of order.
No, those are your rules of order, Counsel.
Counselor Novoselfski, Counselor Guanasso, please, okay, we've had enough of this, it's now almost eight o'clock, okay? We've had a very lengthy Ways and Means Subcommittee, okay?
I'd like to add it.
I will just ask, okay, if we can start, I'm going to go down the row, 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 right now, if any councilors have any other changes to the, to the budget, we'll go down it right now, and then we'll vote on each one of them individually as a whole. So, Counselor Novoselfski, your suggestion?
Yes, my first suggestion is again to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for Human Resources part-time salaries, that's number one. Number two, 127 Office of Innovations and.
Can you speak into the microphone, Counselor Novoselfski?
They can't even hear. Well, how's that, any better?
This is good, yep.
Okay, on 127 Office of Innovation Assistant to the Director, I'd like to reinstate five thousand dollars, so make a reduction of one thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. On the Deputy Director of Strategic Planning and Resources, it's on that second page too.
What line, what number, what number are we talking about, Counselor?
182.
182, okay.
Strategic Planning and Economic Page, section two, page seventy-three, Deputy Director, was put in for ninety thousand dollars, I would like to have that twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars reinstated to go against the committee.
Okay, so, so, so the committee voted against this position, you're asking to, okay.
To reinstate, and I have one more. On 434 Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Superintendent, was appropriated for the base salary of seventy-five thousand. Did the committee?
That, that failed in committee, Counselor, there was no cuts made there.
Okay, then it's the one for Infrastructure that failed.
Four twenty.
Both failed. No, I thought one, one. One passed.
Passed, one failed.
One failed, one passed, that's correct, the one that failed was Chief of Infrastructure, originally for seventy-five thousand dollars. That was supposed to be reduced, but it failed, so that's okay. I want to go back down to 434 Public Works, Water and Sewer Superintendent, to reinstate the twelve thousand eight dollars into the, into that budget.
Is that all, Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you, any other councilors wish to make any changes to what was already discussed, and then we will go down the proposed cuts that were already made, or voted on, Counsel McKenna?
Yes, thank you, I have to raise my hand, I'm having technical difficulties with everything. Okay, thank you, I voted yes for, um, wait a minute, I can't even say.
Voting no.
I voted for, um, the chief of the superintendent in, um, Infrastructure, and I want to vote no.
Okay, so we're going to go down, we're going to vote on all of those.
Okay, thank you.
You voted no.
Then I want to vote yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you voted no, you wanted to vote yes.
One at a time, Counsel, I'll call them out, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That changes that vote. That changes that failure.
Well, so the, the process is, it looks like the recommendations from the Ways and Means are not going to be taken up, they're just going to be a roll call vote and everything, with the, with the, with the potential.
I would like, I would like, if, with all due respect, Mr. Mr. President, you're the president, but I would like to call out the favorable votes for, from the Ways and Means Subcommittee that we all spent a lot of hours on, and then anybody can do whatever they want after they hear that it was a favorable vote from the Subcommittee. They can vote it down, they can vote it up, they can do whatever they want, that's, I, I kind of feel that's.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Point of order.
Correct, that's what we're trying to get to, Counsel, Counsel Rotundo?
Well, maybe I'm mistaken, but the normal order of business is that you take up the report from the committee, you vote on it, and that's it. There's no other, there is no other, you know, you know, pick here, pick there.
There aren't, we should.
Or you have a minority report.
Counselor, I, I'm, that's what we're trying to do, but it looks like Counselor Novoselfski had some changes, I, I really would hope that we would not all fall on that line, if we have some changes, let's just take them up individually, and if someone wants to amend what the, what the recommendations of the Ways and Means is, her vote, her dollar amount, feel free to go with that, let's go one at a time on the recommendations from Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, is that, is everyone okay with that?
That's right.
Any Counselor has the ability to make a substitute motion.
So, we're going, point of order.
Floor Rotundo?
So, do you want to have eleven substitute motions?
I prefer not to.
Because we could be here until eleven o'clock if I decide to do it.
Ways and Means Subcommittee meeting, and I think we should be respectful.
I said, I, I, I'm telling you, we could be here till eleven o'clock if I decide to do it.
Correct, I understand.
Alright, I just want to make that noted.
I'd like to take up the Ways and Means report, and then we can vote on it that way.
Going to read each.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President?
Counselor.
At this point, at least at this point, I'd like to make a minority report out of this, and take up the items that were.
I love you, that's great.
I want to take up the items that were cut, and deal with them individually, not as a whole, because if you take up, if you take up the committee report and it passes, it defeats all our choices of what we want to do, and who we want to feel is the right thing to do.
Right.
So, I'm going to do a minority report.
Understood.
And my, my, my minority report is to reinstate all the cuts that were, that were chosen by the committee.
Motion to approve?
It'll be a roll call.
That's right, so a motion to approve would be yes, and to vote against that would be no, correct? Uh, it's Madam Clerk?
Yes, a yes vote would reinstate what was cut, a no vote would keep the Ways and Means report as is, okay?
To maintain the cuts that were presented by Counselor Visconti, correct?
Correct.
And that would be a no vote, correct?
A yes vote would accept Counselor Novoselfski's minority report, and a no vote would keep the recommended cuts as is, as reported by the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Exactly.
Okay?
Roll call.
Counselor Gino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
He's on mute.
Out there.
Other than mute.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry, Counselor.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
Where is he?
Might have some technical difficulties.
He's still muted.
Counselor Morabito? Counselor Morabito is absent, Counselor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Serino?
No.
No, Counselor Visconti?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, Counselor, Counsel President Keith?
Just to be clear, a yes vote, a yes vote, a no vote would agree with one hundred, all the cuts, one hundred percent?
No.
Yeah, it was just unmuted.
A no vote simply says the cuts that were approved, not all the cuts.
So, no.
A yes vote is approving Counselor Novoselfski's minority report to restore the cuts.
Yeah.
A no vote, okay. I'm sorry, Counselor Keith, one more time.
I vote to. I vote yes.
Counselor Keith voting yes, the minority report fails, the Ways and Means.
Yes, excuse me, I was forced muted early, early, and I couldn't.
I may, no you weren't.
We got you.
Counselor Morabito, what was your vote?
Guys, we gotta get it together.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
I was not muting you, sir.
Point of order, I believe.
I was muted from previous.
Point of order, I believe, Madam Clerk has a question for you, Counselor Morabito.
Counselor Morabito, what was your vote?
Yes.
Counselor Morabito voting yes, the minority report fails, the Ways and Means Committee report is now on the floor. Madam Clerk, on reconsideration?
Mr. President?
Madam, Counsel.
Motion to suspend rules in order to take up reconsideration?
Thank you.
Reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail? In favor?
Second.
That's on the minority report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now the other ones on the floor?
Yep.
Okay, and again, Mr. Mr. President, Counselor Novoselfski, those suggestions I made before, prior to my minority report, I'd like those, be put on the floor, readjustments against the, against the original committee report, those specific items I mentioned earlier.
Madam Clerk, do you still?
I want to repeat them.
Specifics?
Yes, please.
Please repeat them, Counselor.
And it should be the, the reduction amount, not the total appropriation.
That's correct, this is the line item. There's a, each line item.
Actually, point of order, point of order, that's not how this works.
That's what I'm going to give you.
That's not how this works. Under devoters, we took up the minority report. The, the actual report from the, the, from the, from the Ways and Means Committee stands, so what Counselor Visconti has put in for the cuts passed, and your minority report failed, that's how I read this.
That's.
Am I wrong here?
My, yeah, but it's back on the floor. I tend to disagree with you, Counsel, but.
That's okay.
The, the committee report is back on the floor to discuss.
Madam Clerk, point of order?
The report contained, the current Ways and Means Committee report on the floor has, doesn't have any edits that Counselor Novoselfski is adding at the moment, it's what was just reported out, so there's some cuts that passed, some that failed.
Right, and I want to, and I want to adjust the ones that failed, the ones that passed, and some of them that failed. Most of them, that, most of them that failed, that were reduced, those are the ones I want to work on, it's not all of them, it's just a specific five or six that I wanted to change.
Can we take them up as they, as they go, Counselor Novoselfski?
Is that what you're going to do, you're going to go through each one?
I, I think that would be the best, I think that would be the best way to go about it.
It's up to you, Mr. President.
I think that would be the best, so not to confuse everyone, we should take them up as each of the proposed cuts came out, we can take them up individually, yes. Madam Clerk, would that be the best way?
That would be the simplest way for everyone to understand.
Right, so if we can take up each proposed cut.
Okay.
I would actually just ask if Counsel, if we can just state whether it was voted out favorably or unfavorably, and then do a roll call on each one with, with, if Counselor Novoselfski has additional adjustments. But would these be on top of the, the adjustments that you already asked during Subcommittee?
I was not on the committee.
You were in Subcommittee, you made, you made adjustments.
I was in Subcommittee, and.
And you proposed adjustments to overtime that were voted favorably.
Some were, some were, yes, but those are the ones that I'm, I'm targeting, the ones that I felt should have been.
Okay, so, so, speak on individual, Counselor, if you could just speak on the individual ones as they come up, that would be wonderful.
You bring them up, and I'll bring them up.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
First line item, this failed in Subcommittee. Department 125 Human Resources, page two dash thirteen, part-time salaries, seventeen thousand dollars, proposed reduction.
Counselor Novoselfski, you had, you had a wish to change this?
Ira, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Okay, if I'm correct, 125 Human Resources Part-Time Salaries, that failed, am I correct, that reduction?
Yes.
So, we're going to leave that one alone, because that's so safe.
Okay, so, so the will, the will of the Ways and Means Subcommittee was shot down? We take a roll call vote on that, Counselor, I mean, Madam Clerk?
Whatever the Council decides, is this?
All in favor?
I want to do a roll call, no?
I'll take a roll.
It's a roll call.
I prefer a roll call.
It's a roll call, yes.
In accordance with remote participation, they should be taken as a roll call.
Okay, and I, I, I just, um, great, so roll call now, just as, for the record, a yes on the roll call would be in favor of the negative vote in Subcommittee, or a no would be in favor?
Never vote in the negative, it should be as a, it should be positive, so there's no confusion between yes and no.
So, a yes would?
Save the cuts.
Or not cut, or cut? A yes would be on the recommendation of the committee, correct?
The City Council actually doesn't have to vote on a cut that failed in committee, someone would have to make that motion on the floor if they want to bring that cut up again.
Okay.
So, the count, the, the cut failed.
It failed, okay.
Okay. Counsel Powers, next, next item?
Next, next item is Department 127 Office of Innovation and Data Management, Chief Innovation Officer. This suggested cut passed in committee with a favorable recommendation.
Counselor Novoselfski, do you have an alteration that you wish to add to this?
I do, I would like to change the reduction to ten thousand dollars even, rather than seventeen thousand.
So, the reduction passed at seventeen thousand, you'd like to amend it to ten thousand dollars?
That's correct.
The Ways and Means reported it out favorably at seventeen thousand dollars, it wasn't unanimous, but it was favorable. So, we have a roll call vote on?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Point of inquiry to the clerk, so where, this is my, my first budget vote. Say, as a Counselor, I would like to vote with the Ways and Means recommendation, so we're going to vote on Counselor Novoselfski's substitute motion, will we have an opportunity to vote on the seventeen thou, we, okay?
Yes.
So, I would vote.
If Counselor Novoselfski's substitute motion fails, then you can vote on the previous amount.
Okay, alright, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, on Counselor Novoselfski, Counsel Rotundo?
Motion to table.
No. We vote no in that motion.
Okay.
Motion to table is.
Motion to table is a vote, you have to vote on it.
Motion to table, Counselor Novoselfski's substitute motion. Counselor Gino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Oh. Am I, did you hear me?
No. Counselor McKenna voting no, Counselor Morabito?
No.
Counselor Morabito voting no, Counselor Novoselfski?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo?
President.
Voting present, Counselor Serino?
No.
Voting no, Counselor Visconti?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel President Keith?
No.
No, motion to table fails, substitute motion is on the floor.
Substitute motion?
To change, to change the number to ten thousand dollars, from seventeen.
On the motion.
Shall the City Council reduce the line item 127 Office of Innovation and Data Management, page eleven, I'm sorry, page two dash nineteen, Chief Innovation Officer, in the amount of ten thousand dollars?
Roll call.
Counselor Gino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Counselor Morabito voting yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Serino?
No.
No, Counselor Visconti?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, substitute motion fails.
Okay, on the, uh.
On the cut.
On the cut itself? Shall the City Council reduce the line item for Office of Innovation and Data Management, Chief Innovation Officer, in the amount of seventeen thousand ninety-two dollars? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
No.
No, that line item will be reduced by seventeen thousand ninety-two dollars.
Next item, actually, Madam Clerk, would it be appropriate, there is an attendee that's had their raised hand, and they'd like to speak?
Your call, Counsel President.
Just, Mr. Lampadecchio, allow you to talk, I know you wish to speak on the budget.
Thank you, I'll make it brief, Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue, we're just watching the Subcommittee meeting earlier, I just wanted to point out a couple of points of information for the Council, especially given the fact that I do work in Human Resources. I know that there was a lot of conversation about the new salaries that were proposed for some of these new positions, and that the city was unable to do a compensation study because they are new positions, so if that's the case, the Council and the city to look towards the Occupational Outlook Handbook, posted by the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, it'll help the city get some median points around salary for some of these types of positions that might be out there in other communities. The other point of information is regarding the Pay Equity Act and the Massachusetts Equal Pay Act, and I think this is what Counselor Morabito was alluding to, I would advise the Council to remove any types of pronouns and names, to personalize these positions as you're proposing salary reductions. Position can be very harmful for the city in terms of litigation process, as well as identifying gender in these positions could lead to to bias, whether that's intentional or unintentional, so just a couple of points of information from that. I just want to say thank you to all of you again for all of your hard work on the budget, as well as Mr. Viskey for answering all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, good point.
Thanks for your points, but I don't think we're mentioning names.
Counsel President?
Not mentioning any names.
We're going to move to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Counsel President, quickly?
Yep.
Just one, one second.
Counsel Rotundo?
If, from this point forward, we could ask the the mayor and Richard Viskey to only number positions and not put names or genders, that way, we won't have one of the issues that we had tonight in particular, that was brought up, I believe, by the mayor or somebody else, so that way, we can eliminate the, the, the whole thing of gender, color, period, based on merit, and, and, and just go, go by the numbers, I mean, that's it.
I think it's a good point, and Counsel, 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 Mr. Mayor, one moment, please. I, I think it's a good point, I would just say from a budgeting standpoint, where, where, where they are, and all of these potential changes are, and certainly learnings from some councilors, you know, including myself, will be great for the next review, I, I, I think that these are all good pieces of information, so.
That's all they do at our pot, is everybody has their number.
Right, so, Mr. Mayor, real brief, please, thank you.
Very briefly, in terms of identifying employees, we've, and, and I don't know if Richard Viskey's on the line still, but I know that we've presented the budget without names, and we were requested specifically by the Council to include names, so if it's a will of the Council to do that, that's fine, I just have to say that this process has been misinformed, it's been remarkably short sighted, and I am incredibly disappointed, thank you.
Thank you for your point, let's move on to the next piece.
Department.
Opinion, anyway.
127 Office of Innovation and Data Management, line item, Director of 311, reduction in the amount of five thousand dollars. This passed with a favorable recommendation in Subcommittee.
On the, on, on the, roll call.
Roll call on the reduction in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Director of 311 in the Office of Innovation and Data Management, Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
No.
No, Counsel Novoselfski?
No.
No, Counsel Powers?
No.
No, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
No.
No. This cut has been approved.
Next.
Next proposed cut that was, uh, this also received a favorable, favorable recommendation from the Committee, this is Office of Innovation and Data Management, page 2-19, Assistant to the Director, reduction in the amount of $6,574.
Mr. President, Counsel Novoselfski?
Counsel, Ms. Novoselfski?
I would like to change that reduction down to $1,574.
So, you'd like to amend the reduction, so, so, an amendment, amended motion, Madam Clerk, on that?
The substitute motion by Counsel Novoselfski, in the amount, the reduction for this particular line item will be 1,0574, Counsel Janino?
No.
No, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
No.
No, Counsel Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
No.
No, Counsel Visconti?
No.
Voting no, Counsel Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel President Keith?
A yes, only, yes.
Yes.
I could change my vote.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Counsel Rotundo?
The no.
Voting no?
And it fails.
Counsel Novoselfski's substitute motion fails?
On the, on, on the regular, um, uh, reduction, which is how much again?
This is to reduce the line item for Director of 311 by $5,000, Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
No.
No, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
No.
No, Counsel Novoselfski?
No.
No, Counsel Powers?
No.
No, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
No.
No, this motion passes?
On the next?
Next item, this... Next item is the Office of Innovation and Data Management overtime line item, in the amount of $23,449. I'm sorry, it was amended to $18,449 in Committee, that recommendation passed.
So, the amended amount via Counsel Novoselfski passed through Committee, roll call?
Roll call in the amended amount, um, I'm sorry, this is, yeah, this is for eight, I'm sorry, $18,449, it's a reduction in the overtime in Office of Innovation and Data Management, Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, uh, that reduction has been approved by the City Council. The next, uh... The next... The next line item, this failed in Committee, this was in the amount of $3,000, being reduced from the Assistant Budget Director position in CFO- auditing, page 2-24.
On the, on the, on the field?
Point, point of information, so, Madam Clerk, if this was favorable by the Committee, a yes vote would support not cutting it, or a no vote would support? There, there was no, this received a non-favorable recommendation from the Committee, so...
Yes, Counsel Janino's asking, is a yes vote would, would, would go in favor what the Ways and Means reported, reported out, correct?
This cut did not make it to the floor, because...
But you read that... We don't have to vote on it then, correct?
No, unless someone, you don't have to vote on it.
Counsel Rotundo?
She just, uh, Madam Clerk just answered it.
Yeah, so, we don't have to vote on it, we can move on, correct, is everyone, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, so, what?
Next item is Department 140, Information Technology, page 2-32, overtime in the amount of $5,000.
That was approved by the Committee.
That was approved, it was initially proposed at 7,500, and the Committee reduced it to a $5,000 reduction, as opposed to a $7,500 reduction.
Does that have to be accepted?
Well, yeah, we have to roll call on it.
That was passed by the Committee.
Okay.
Roll call on, on the amended overtime number?
Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
No.
No, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
He's on mute.
No.
I'm sorry, was that no?
No, no.
No. Counsel Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
What is the vote on this one, uh, the, the, the 5,000, is that?
Yes, I, this is from the IT Department, overtime line item.
All right, no.
No, Counsel Zambudo?
No.
No, Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that, that reduction passes?
Next item?
Next item is the Department 182, Strategic Planning and Economic Development, page 2-73, Deputy Director, to be reduced in the amount of $20,137, this passed in Committee.
Mr. President?
State your point, Counselor.
Uh, I would like to see this, uh, reduction not pass, the entire amount be reinstated.
Well, we're gonna vote on that right now. On the roll?
Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Voting yes, Counsel Guanasso?
No.
Voting no, Counsel McKenna?
I need an explanation for this, please.
So, this is a yes vote, will reduce the position of Deputy Director by $20,137, and no vote will?
Take no change.
No vote, will there be no change?
Okay, so, a yes would reduce it? I say yes, yes.
Counsel McKenna voting yes, Counsel Morbeto?
No.
Voting no, Counsel Novoselfski?
You're on mute, Counselor. Counselor, you're on mute.
Talking to me?
No, me. Yes or no?
Well, Mr., Mr. President, I asked that it's all be reinstated, I'm, I would vote yes if it was gonna be reinstated, and that's... That's not what she read from the road.
The vote is no, the vote, if you vote no, there will be no cut.
No, I asked, I asked for it all to be reinstated. That ain't, that ain't what we're voting on yet.
We're voting on the cut.
I know that, but I'm making a motion that, that, I would have been...
We're in the middle of a roll call.
So, what do you? You guys didn't hear my motion.
Didn't hear your motion, Counselor?
I was probably on mute, I was probably on mute.
That's you doing to yourself, yes or no?
No.
Counsel Novoselfski voting no, Counsel Powers?
No.
No, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel President Keith?
No.
No, that cut passes? Next item is Department of Municipal Inspections, page 2-98, Building General Accountful Position, Reduction in the Amount of $11,750, this failed in Committee.
So, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on it, we can pass, move on, correct?
Unless, uh, Counsel?
Right, this cut failed. I'm, I'm good with it. One in favor, okay, moving on, next one.
Is Department 420, Department of Public Works, Chief of Infrastructure, page 2-180, Chief of Infrastructure, to be reduced in the amount of $12,008, this failed in Committee.
Ms. Field?
Yeah, this is, this is the one that Julian wanted to change her vote on.
Yes.
But it doesn't matter, it's too late. No, it's not, I want to... On the committee report it is, on the committee report it's over.
Counsel, Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counsel, let me speak, I understand what you want, what you're saying, if Counsel McKenna wanted to change her vote from the Subcommittee, that's fine, we can vote on a full roll call right now on it, okay?
That's what we're gonna do, yeah.
Thank you, so, let me, can you guys just give me a chance, let me do it before you jump down each other's throat?
I know, you're running a...
I know you're getting used to it, so, Madam Clerk, would you fall?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. President.
Counsel Novoselfski?
This failed in Committee?
Correct.
And that's the way we're voting.
Just for the indication, it has failed in Committee, it, it seems to be, there's a taste to maybe change some opinions, I, I, I don't plan on changing my vote, I plan on voting it down, but we're gonna do a roll call.
Well, it failed, so, the numbers stand. Right? The $12,000 is not reduced.
No, we can do a roll call on it, the reinstatement.
I understand, it's whether or not to take it down or not.
We, we will be doing a roll call to take down, Madam Clerk, we would be doing a roll call to reinstitute the cut, or to, uh, to support?
This cut did not pass.
Correct, so, we will be doing a roll call to support the...
I thought if, if, if you were allowed in Committee, there would continue to be no voter, that was my understanding.
Any Counselor has the ability to make a motion on the floor, whether or not it passed in Committee.
So, what has Iver been doing right along here, he's been making motions, we're doing the same thing, or, or we're making a motion that somebody doesn't like, come on.
So, is there a motion on the floor, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor to restore the cut.
Counsel, point of, like a personal privilege.
Counsel.
Through you, uh, Mr. President, to Counsel Visconti. Is there anything that you see that you may like to add?
I...
Punch drunk right now.
Wow, um, let, let's, let's put the motion on the floor, okay? If, we, uh, pu, put the motion on the floor, okay, for the reduction of 12,000,008.
So, you're, you're, you're initiating a motion to, to restore the cut?
I initiated the whole thing from the get-go, so I might...
So, Madam Clerk, does a motion?
Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
Point of order.
I ask a roll call.
Point of inquiry.
Okay, one at a time, Counsel Novoselfski, then Counsel Morbeto.
Okay, let me, let me state that the $12,000 cut failed in Committee.
Correct.
So, now, the, the actual motion should be whether or not, whether or not that is approved by the Council.
Substitute motion.
Well, now, he's making a, the Chairman's making...
Just like you did earlier.
Substitute motion to reverse, to go against the Committee, to go against the Committee.
Counsel Visconti, he's not the Chairman, he, he's wishing to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Propose a motion, he's wishing to propose a motion to institute a cut of, can you say the amount, Madam Clerk, and then call the roll, thank you.
Go ahead.
Roll call.
There was a lot of commotion, could the gentlemen please repeat the motion that was on the floor?
Counsel Visconti.
You wanna do it, Jerry, or do you want me?
Oh, uh, hey, go ahead, Tony, I, I, it doesn't matter to me.
That the City Council, uh, restore the cut, uh, of 520, Department of Public Works, Chief of Infrastructure, uh, to 12, uh, 12,000,008 dollars.
That cut failed in Committee.
Correct, we're trying to put it back.
They're trying to override the Committee's vote.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
No, no, that, that cut failed, there was no cut made, there was no reduction made for that line item.
I know, we're trying to put it back, I'm putting a motion to put the cut back, I have that right.
You're asking that that position, that that salary be reduced in the amount of $12,008?
Correct.
Okay, very... Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
No.
No, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
No.
No, Counsel Novoselfski?
No.
No, Counsel Powers?
No.
No, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
No.
No, the, that line item shall be reduced by $12,008.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is Department 434, Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer, page 4-8, for the position of Superintendent, to be reduced by $12,008, that cut passed in Committee, with a favorable recommendation.
On the cut?
Mr. President?
To, Counselor, yes?
I asked, I put a motion to reinstate that amount. Okay, a reinsta...
You can vote against the cut, is what we're gonna do, we're gonna vote on the roll, if you wanted to vote against that cut, you certainly could.
Understood. What, what number are we on?
Sure, so, this is line item, Department 434, Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer, page 4-8, for the position of Superintendent, to be reduced by $12,008.
And, ma, ma, um, Counsel, just wanted to make sure you're aware that if we vote on this, uh, in, in the recommendation of the Committee, um, you're basically cutting someone's salary by $25,000.
That's correct.
Taking over a chief position in the city, in many, many roles.
That would spend a lot for the city.
Quite a bit.
We'd be, we'd be ashamed.
We went in there, we, I think we went over all this in Subcommittee.
I know, I know we did, but we've made a bunch of changes since.
You wanna reiterate it, yeah, okay.
Okay, on, on, so, Madam Clerk, would you read it?
Can I have a moment, please?
Counsel Rotundo?
We also have 29 people that are laid off, we have a community that is starving, we have people that don't have jobs, 16.9% unemployment, what was your question?
I didn't have a question.
Okay, thank you.
Let's be respectful. Thank you, Madam Clerk, on, on the motion, or could you?
Can you read it?
Read it again, sure, so, this is Department 434, Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer, page 4-8, this is for the position of Superintendent, to be reduced by $12,008. Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
No.
No, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
No.
He said no.
No, Counsel Morbeto voting no, Counsel Novoselfski?
No.
No, Counsel Powers?
No.
No, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
No.
No, this cut is approved by the City Council.
Shame on you.
Counselor?
Next item is Department 522, Department of Public Health.
No, let's not have that, guys, gentlemen, ladies, let's just not have that, let's all, we can all agree to disagree and be respectful, thank you.
Grace.
Item 522, Department of Public Health Department, page 2-121, Chief of Health and Human Services, to be reduced in the amount of $21,162. This reduction received a favorable recommendation in Committee.
Roll call?[1783.64]
Roll call.
Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbeto?
No.
No, Councillor Nowosowski?
No.
No, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Keefe?
No.
No, this cut has been approved. Bear in mind with me, councillor, every time you take a vote, I have to do math. So just sorry for going slow.
You're doing a great job, Madam Clerk. You're doing a great job.
And the Director of Outreach for Public Health, Page 2-121. That was proposed to be reduced the amount of $9,866.
Roll call? Recommendation?
Want to confirm whether that passed or failed? I didn't have that on my other notes.
Passed.
Oh, okay.
Roll call.
Roll call on the reduction, the amount of 8,000, I'm sorry, $9,866. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbeto?
No.
No, Councillor Nowosowski?
No.
No, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Keefe?
No.
No, that salary line item has been reduced.
That's it. All the propos- those are the proposed cuts?
Those are the proposed cuts. I just wanna, can we just double check? I just wanna make sure that we have everything. $17,000,092 to be reduced from the Chief Innovation Officer position. The amount of $5,000 to be reduced from the position of Director of 311. Overtime to be reduced in the amount of $18,499, 449.
What about the Assistant Director?
The Assistant to the Director for Office of Innovation and Data Management.
Yep.
That's the one I have a question on.
Okay.
There was a substitute motion to reduce it in the amount of 1,00574, and that failed.
That's fair.
So the original cut stayed.
The original, the original cut stayed, okay. That's the one I was.
I believe the new number was 6,574.
Yes.
You are right.
That was the one I was missing. Then the two line items at the amount of 12,000,008. I think I have it, okay. So with the total reductions approved by the City Council, the new total the new, uh, total sum for the FY '21 budget is $209,599,320.
That's the new budget?
Yes, that's with the reductions.
Can I have that total again, please?
Sure.
320? 20?
Yes.
Thank you. Do, now, now we gotta vote to approve the budget, correct?
Okay.
As, yep. As a whole.
Madam Clerk?
On the roll call? Whereas pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, the mayor submitted a proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 to the City Council on June 8th, 2020. And whereas the City Council advertised and will hold public hearings to consider the proposed budget on June 15th and any other dates necessary as advertised in the public hearing notice. And whereas, upon motion, the City Council accepted the budget as submitted by the mayor after the reductions that were just discussed have been voted on separately. Now, therefore, be it voted by the City Council of the City of Revere, that the cit- that the City of Revere hereby adopts and approves the budget for fiscal year 2021 in the sum of which sum shall be appropriated and written by taxation in other sources as listed below. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
He's muted.
Yes.
Councillor Vote, Nowosowski voting yes. Councillor Powers?
Who's next?
Councillor Powers appears to be frozen.
You mean his computer, I hope.
Went to bed.
I hope it's computer.
Who is it?
Councillor Powers' wifi went down.
Councillor Powers. Right. You frozen? You gotta vote on the budget, yes or no?
No, I know that, but I was waiting for Councillor Nowosowski to vote.
Oh, I did.
Oh, Councillor.
You gotta tell me, wake up.
All right, all right, George.
Yes.
Councillor Powers voting yes. Councillor Rotundo?
What's going on here?
Is George gone? George's camera's off, but his.
Oh, he got George. George, are there?
He's not voting on the budget.
George! Rotundo!
Is he abstaining?
No.
Absent? Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the fiscal year 20, 2021 budget has been passed in the amount of $209,599,320.
Madam Clerk? Okay, uh, Councillor Zambudo, zoning subcommittee.
Uh, okay, the, uh, thank you, Mr. President. The zoning subcommittee met, uh, this evening with one item on the, uh, agenda, uh, global oils, uh, repair, replacement of, uh, piping, uh. Uh, the clerk can read it, but the committee voted unanimously to support it. And so I would ask for a favorable, uh, roll call vote. And the clerk will read the, the, uh, conditions, please.
Uh, we, we read those in during subcommittee.
Oh, okay, so they're in. So we're asking for a vote with the conditions already read into the record.
Shall the City Council grant the requ- the relief requested by the petitioner subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna? Is absent? Councillor Morbeto?
Yes.
Councillor Morbeto voting yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo? Is absent? Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
I vote yes, Ashley. I'm sorry, I was at the, I just got a glass of water.
Sorry, the, the roll was already called.
All right, sorry, okay.
Next item on the agenda is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Mr. President? Mr. President, earlier this evening, earlier this evening, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had five positions up for, uh, to be appointed. First being a communication with the mayor relative to the appointment of David Callahan. And that was unanimous vote in support of his confirmation. I ask the council do the same this evening. On a roll call, please.
Roll call on the appointment of David Callahan to the position of Chief of Police. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbeto?
Yes.
Councillor Morbeto voting yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo? Is absent? Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
I'm sorry, I think my internet went out. Did you call me?
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, motion, uh, motion to confirm David Callahan's appointment to the position of Chief of Police has been confirmed.
Thank you. Next is communication with the mayor relative to the appointment of Daniel Arcsina to the License Commission. That vote was out favorably by the entire committee. I ask you the same this evening on a roll call.
Roll call, Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo? Oh, he's, did he, is he, did he leave the meeting? Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Madam Clerk, there's a, it looks like there's a attendee there which is to speak. I'm not sure if this will be an opportune time.
Uh, we already had that meeting held, and we are now in the voting process.
Okay, well, what, what? Wait for your committee meeting to be out and all of the, the person speak.
Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Act Log Lemonade to zoning Board of Appeals. That also was voted out favorably by the, uh, Appointments Subcommittee. I ask on a roll call.
There is a speaker.
Yeah, the speaker wants to speak on this act, on Act Log. So if we could allow him the latitude, that'd be wonderful. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Joe Gravellisi.
Go ahead. Gets my wishes, but go ahead.
Hello, uh, Joe Gravellisi, 37th, we have number two in Revere. Uh, I just wanna speak, um, in support of Act Log's nomination here, and I also just really wanna applaud and thank the mayor uh, for taking affirmative steps to diversify the boards and commissions in this city. You know, I think the eyes of the whole region are on cities like Revere uh, and how we can adapt to, you know, the increasing diversity of our community and make sure that our government reflects it. So I'm really glad that the mayor has shown his commitment to that. I hope that the City Council shows its commitment to that moving forward, and I appreciate the fact that Act Log has given the courtesy of an up or down vote on his confirmation today. I think that's appropriate, given his qualifications, as was the case for all of the people that were on the agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the latitude, Councillor Guanasso.
Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Roger Hilton to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That was also voted favorably by these Appointments Subcommittee on a roll call.
Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Right there.
Is absent? Councillor Rotundo is back?
I'm right here.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councillor Rotundo voting yes. Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Next, Mr. President, was a communication from the mayor Next, Mr. President, was a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Diplo Rana as a Executive Director of the city's Human Rights Mission. After considerable debate, it was determined by the Subcommittee to hold this over for further review and to get input from the mayor and any other source made available at the next council meeting that we will vote on this, the next council meeting, after reviewing, uh, all the information, data received and asked for by the, uh, Subcommittee. Thank you. That concludes the Appointment Subcommittee meeting for today.
Thank you, Counselor. And we are on to regular council meeting.
Yay.
Madam Clerk? Motion's.
Onto I believe I received a text from, let's see. Okay, that was a different one. Motion presented by Councilor Serino that the city council ordered to a public hearing the following amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Revere.
Mr. President? Madam Clerk, I'm sorry to interrupt. The hour is late and we have the teachers on hold, and I'd like to dive into this motion. Can I ask that we table this until the July meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number ten, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor request the DPW to replace the Butler Circle Memorial sign which was damaged by a motor vehicle accident. Further, that the large sign of the circle be removed.
I can't. Councilor Powers?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, Butler Circle, uh, past couple of years, we've put, uh, a good amount of money into that that came from mitigation money from, uh, some of the people who were building in the city. And, uh, as a result, uh, circle looks very nice, and one night the car come by and it hit one of the signs, the new signs that we had put in there. And that's what I'm asking to be replaced, and there's also a second sign, uh, actually a, a third sign. It's large and outdated, you can't read it, and I've asked, uh, did that be taken out of there? And we just have the two signs, one going wrong.
Thank you, Counselor. All the motion? All, all in favor? Aye. Ordered. Motion.
Calendar item number eleven, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor request the DPW to clean up and trim the shrubs at the park located at the corner of Naponton Street and Sagamore Street. Further, that the dead shrubs and hedging be removed and replaced.
This is a, uh, mini park down at the corner of Naponton and Sagamore. It needs to be spruced up, particularly trimmed into some shrubs, two or three shrubs that have to be replaced, uh, so that they're in conformity with the rest of the, uh, the park down there. This is one of the original mini parks that was, uh, put in under the, uh, Corolla administration. And, uh, I think there's, uh, three of them left, and this is one of the three that were originally six, and this is one of the three. And, uh, that would, you know, make the area look a lot nicer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ordered.
Calendar item number twelve, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor be requested to request an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of five thousand one hundred eighty dollars to complete the filing of a flood plain map revision request with, with FEMA for the Rogans Point area. This would provide the monies necessary to complete the contract with the Woods Hole Group to file a flood plain map revision request with FEMA for the Rogans Point area. There are a number of homeowners in that area that are paying exorbitant flood insurance rates because FEMA has them located in a high velocity flood zone. The city is petitioning FEMA to revise the flood zone maps in that area, which will remove these homes from the high velocity flood zone. In order to complete the filing of this request with FEMA, the city needs to sign a contract amendment with the Woods Hole Group.
Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. I think this motion speaks for itself. I think it says it all. Um, I just would like to see this, uh, done because some of these people are paying twenty thousand dollars in flood insurance, uh, in Rogans Point, so, uh, it's short money, and it comes from the CIT fund. And, um, it speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
I do have a question.
Councilor Rotundo?
If I'm not mistaken, and maybe we can get one from the mayor or from the city solicitor. I- i- is this the that they can only do it once, and then it gets reverted back off? Or is it, uh, totally removed?
I, I think it's totally revised. I don't think it's totally re- removed. I think it's totally revised.
I, I think Frank Stringy said at one time that you can only petition it once. In fact, uh, Ralph DeChico had that issue. Can we get something on that from, uh, Frank Stringy, pass this and go from there, for mine all?
Yeah, that was, that's a good idea. I was gonna have to, um, I was gonna ask the same question, in, in essence also, would they be able to be more coverage, but, uh, good question, we should probably get it passed. Any other counselors, and I do have attendee that wishes to speak on this? Any other councils? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna, uh, we have, uh, Mr. DeChico? Name and address for the record.
Ralph DeChico, forty-nine Washington Street, yeah. Edification for the councils. It is only one time, you can only adjust it for one time. Uh, I've been battling for years on it. If they do change the flood map and readjust it, it's for one time, and then once FEMA does go out and redo the flood maps, um, you will not be able to change it again. And if you do take a look at the flood maps for the entire city, um, not only Woods Hole, um, there's a lot of areas in the city of Revere that are paying for insurances that shouldn't because they do not have any of our title gates on the map, and they still think we're DCR. So I would like, they could even expand for the entire city of Revere. Um, cause there's a lot of people that are paying flood insurance that should not be paying flood insurance. Because you have some guy out in Nebraska doing flood maps for FEMA, um, and it's costing a lot of the taxpayers, and we've had to pay flood insurance that shouldn't. Uh, I've been battling for years with FEMA, um, and they did get it one time years ago, but that was only a one-shot deal. That's the situation with them. So I just wanted to talk on that.
Point of information.
Counselor.
And we can probably take that up on a separate, uh, course, but you've got Washington, Lincoln, all those areas, some of these areas have actual, not Lincoln, but, uh, Washington have has flood flood zones. So I mean, the same thing with Asti and so forth, so we should think about taking this up later on and passing this right now without delay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number thirteen, motion presented by counselors Janino and McKenna that the mayor, as the Chair of the Revere School Committee, be requested to request the Revere Public Schools to immediately reinstate the three educators who were punished for union activity. On June fifth, twenty twenty, three City of Revere staff members at the AC Whalen School had their contracts non-resu- non-renewed as retaliation for their union activity. They were punished for standing up for their, for the rights of teachers and students in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. We call on you and the Revere Public Schools to immediately reinstate these three educators.
Thank you. Um, and any Counselor Janino or McKenna, who would like to go first? Counselor Janino?
McKenna, is that okay with you?
No, go ahead. I'll go afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to thank all the teachers and the people that are here to support this tonight. They've waited for three hours to, uh, say their piece, and they've waited for almost a month for this to come before the council and for us to do something about it. I want to start by saying ordinarily, I do not get involved in issues of the school committee. There's a reason why that's legislative body, and there is a reason why we're a city council. However, this is a totally different issue. This is an issue where employees of the city of Revere were retaliated against for union activity. And that is something that if the school committee is not going to do something, and no one else is going to say anything, Counselor McKenna and I met with the Revere Teachers Association, and we felt that it's at a point now where it is our responsibility to do something. So that's what we did. So I'm not going to speak a ton tonight. Um, I really want you to hear from the people that are affected by this. I just want them to know that they have my support as a city counselor. There should never be an instance in this city where someone is retaliated against for union activity. That's poor practice, and that reflects poorly on this entire city. So I just want to strongly, uh, state that and straight, state my opposition to what's been happening. These are three really good teachers. These are three people that I've got to know personally. And I really think that we need to do something about it as a council, and we need to say that for any part of our city, you should not feel like you're going to be retaliated against to stand up for yourself or to stand up for yourself and seek help from your union. So, um, I'm gonna leave it at that and hand it over to my colleague, Councilor McKenna. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wrote something. I'm gonna read it. Um, as a teacher for thirty-two years, I gave a hundred and ten percent every day to the Revere Public School system and my students. I've been on both sides of the spectrum. On one side, I was the crisis manager for the RTA, co-director for student activities, director for Words Not Weapons, director for the Multicultural Teen Awareness Program, director for Kids at Risk for Mass General Hospital, mentored new teachers, a member of school, the School Improvement Committee, coached Powderpuff, and was the faculty speaker twice. I even have a lifetime excellence award in my name given to a graduated senior. But on the other side, I was reprimanded and written up for leaving a July summer class for twenty minutes for personal reasons. That day, six of the best teachers in the system were also reprimanded for minor offenses. The punishment did not fish, fit the offense, but we were told if you fight the charges, it will have consequences. In this circumstances, these two teachers started receiving poor evaluations after they filed their grievances. I know how it feels to be afraid of what the outcome could have been, so I never challenged the charges and I kept my mouth shut. And I understand now that I should have, I should have challenged the charges and not kept my mouth shut because it is every teacher's right to challenge or file a grievance. I understand the meaning of having a disgruntled administrator, one that can make or break your teaching career. I understand that no matter how hard you work or give yourself to your students and the school system, that a disgruntled administrator can, can make your life miserable, evaluate you poorly, and push you out. And before having this disgruntled administrator, I was getting exceptional evaluations and high praises from everyone. In similarity, before filing a grievance, Victoria and Katie too had excellent evaluations and high praises in their first two years of teaching. It wasn't until after filing a grievance, which every teacher has the right to do, the bad evaluations to both were present. Presented, I'm sorry. I know how it feels when people, when people that you respect, uh, respected, and you don't respect you, and you turn, and, and they turn the other way, they look the other way. I know what it's like not having a voice and not being heard. I understand unfairness. I have lived it as a teacher. And what happened to injustice for all? That is why I'm here tonight for the underdog, to advocate for these three dedicated educators that are on the other side of the spectrum, to lend my voice when I didn't have one, to lend my voice because no one is hearing them. So I'm asking that a lesser punishment be negotiated for these educators to continue being a part of the Revere Public School system and not ruin their careers. Thank you.
Counselor, any other counselors wishing to speak? Right, Counselor Serino? And then Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank counselors McKenna and Janino for filing this motion. I've received some calls from the teachers and many emails from them as well. And I, I have been apprised of the situation, and I, I can't say, I, I wholeheartedly agree one hundred and ten percent with you guys, and I, I'm proud to support this tonight, and, and I will certainly vote for it. No teacher, especially teachers, no teacher should be retaliated against by an administration, by the, uh, the school administration. It's awful and terrible, and again, I am, I'm proud to support it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo, then Counselor Novoselski.
So I would say pretty much conversation's been going on, and earlier today and yesterday, I too have been getting, uh, phone messages. In fact, one of them I have here, and it says, "Get them back." That's what it says, "Get them back." And what I don't understand is as they are union, uh, members and they're represented, I hope the union can, uh, go to the NLRB and fight and say that this was, i- in, in fact, a wrongful termination. Uh, I don't believe what happened is appropriate. I wish, uh, the superintendent would reconsider this. Uh, frankly, I don't know why the school committee hasn't stood up for these people. I, I, I don't I'm really holding my tongue here, so I'm gonna stop before I say anything that I, uh, might regret. But at the end of the day, it does not pass the sniff test.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselski, then Counselor.
I'll pass, Mr. President.
Pass. Counselor Visconti?
I, uh, I too have been getting many, many calls on this, and as a, uh, as a person who was raised on a, on a, uh, a parent's union salary, I, uh, I feel obligated to, uh, words. I, I, while I don't know the other side, I've heard the stories of a lot of teachers. I have not heard the side, uh, of the administration. If in fact this, uh, is the case, I would be very disappointed, uh, that that has taken place. Unions are set up to, um, protect common workers, and it's done for a reason. So, um, while I don't know the other side, it's hard for me to make that decision, but I, I, I feel as though that if they were retaliated, uh, against, it's, um, i- i- it's not right. It's just not right, and, uh, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I admire greatly the superintendent of school, and I think the Revere School Committee does admirable work and hard work for the betterment of our children. Sometimes there's an oversight, and some harshness and judgment, uh, pres- precedes a lot of things. Maybe if we can beg upon them to review and please reinstate these three individuals based on their whole livelihood will be ruined if they don't do so. I mean, if, is it that severe of a, uh, that they wanted this kind of punishment? I think this only, eh, the end of this is only when it comes to a point where they really were derelict of their responsibilities. They didn't do the right thing for our school children. They did something to uproot the school committee and superintendent at some plotted venue. But this is sometimes an oversight, and I think that sometimes people do pass out judgment too quickly. We hope and beg upon them with this letter that we submit to them. They review that, and they reinstate these three individuals, and, and that's the right thing to do. I also have been inundated with several phone calls and emails, and I appreciate each and every one of them. I couldn't get back to all of you, so many. Uh, so what I tried to do is be as logical as possible and that common sense dictate whatever path I, path I choose to, to guide my votes. This one here is very clear. We need to reinstate these three teachers, and we need to do it right away. So let them get on with their lives. I think they know now that you're upset with them, but the severity of the punishment, I think, outs- outweighs the problem. I hope that they consider what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I'll save my point for the end. I know there's a couple attendees that wish to speak. So we have, um, we in order, we have two attendees, Eric Lampadecchio, and then Joe Gravellisi, and then whoever's after that.
Eric Lampadecchio, forty-three Tapley Avenue. I'm a, I'm a union member vocal fourteen forty-five, and as a union member, we're afforded certain additional rights such as winegarden rights that really protect us against these kinds of actions, and it just sounds like these individuals might have been seeking those same types of protections, and I hate to hear that they were possibly reprimanded as a result of seeking additional protections like that. You know, I'm a firm believer that it's never too late to right a wrong, and it's never too late to mend defense, and I really, I agree with Counselor Guanasso. I, I'd love to see these folks reinstated, and I think the city should do the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor, I'm sorry, and, uh, Mr. Gravellisi?
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor. Um, I just want to add my voice in support of this motion. You know, regardless of other differences that clearly existed amongst many of the counselors and speakers tonight, I think this is someone that just about everyone is on board with, uh, to support these educators, and so I really appreciate that this item was brought forward. I thank the two counselors who did so. While the words of educators tonight are going to carry the most weight, and, and it should carry the most weight, there are two things that I want to emphasize that I think haven't been brought up yet that are important to consider here. First of all, um, the positions that these educators were non-renewed for are really essential positions which will be filled one way or the other. You know, it's not like these are positions that we're going to fall victims to budget cuts. So there's truly no reason not to bring back educators who have already proven that they're qualified to do the job and well-respected in the community. Secondly, uh, the city is at risk of facing, facing escalating legal fees if they continue on this course of action. Time when we're facing severe budget pressure, it would be self-defeating to walk into legal expenses to try to force out educators who have the support of students throughout the community. Uh, one thing I just want to add, listening to Counselor McKenna's heartfelt comments earlier tonight, uh, it's an important reminder of the hard work that educators do. Uh, they go above and beyond job descriptions regularly. They very regularly put in overtime and are not compensated for it. Um, and that's something that we really need to keep in mind when we think about funding our teachers. So in addition to restoring these three educators immediately, the council really needs to be speaking in one voice against cuts to education in general. Investing in youth needs to be our first priority. That's what needs to be untouchable in the budget. Uh, education needs to be at the top of the list of things that we protect as we navigate these troubled budget times. So with all the disruption that our students faced in the spring, uh, they're gonna need the educators that they know and trust more than ever this fall. Let's put this through front and center. Let's retain and respect our educators. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have another speaker wishing to speak, uh, Gina Garrow? If you can speak?
I think she's gonna unmute.
Uh, Madam Clerk, would you unmute her? Gina Garrow? I think we're doing it at the same time. Let me try it this time.
Okay, you, you control it.
Gina Garrow, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Garrow.
Okay, am I all set? Can you hear me?
Name and address.
We got you.
Great, thank you. Um, so my name is Gina Garrow, and I'm the president of the Revere Teachers Association. I won't repeat what a lot of people have already said. I just want to be clear that these three educators are exceptional, that not only in the classroom, but as human beings. They were willing to stand up for their fellow educators, students and families, and now as a result of that, have lost their job. They put themselves in harm's way and stood up for the great of good, greater good of others. And now, now aren't these the kind of educators that we want to fight to retain in our city? And aren't these the kind of role models that we want for our students? I think you will agree, yes, it is. Um, as a, as a union, we do not make this appeal to, we would not make this appeal you if not for the administration's attack on our members' protect, protected rights to speak up for themselves and others. We generally respect the administration's right to not renew teachers, renew teachers who do not have professional status, which is what is commonly known and referred to as tenure. We acknowledge the administration's broad discretion to dismiss non-tenured teachers as it sees fit. But the administration does not have the right to dismiss teachers on account of their union activity, and that is what happened here. As a community, we must protect the rights of our educators and stand up for the, who, to stand up for themselves and for one another, and if we, if we create an environment where teachers are fearful Yes. being up, then who will stand up for Revere's children? Beyond that, we are in the midst of a pandemic and massive social upheaval, and our students are experiencing tremendous trauma and facing complete complete uncertainty in the coming school year. We need each and every one of our experienced educators now more than ever, and it is not too late to change course here. As mayor and city councilors, you have the ability and the responsibility to listen to your constituents and put the needs of the city first. Rather than spending the city's precious funds on lawyer fees to fight this legal battle, you can invest in hiring the educators, buying the school supplies, and the PPE that is needed to
is needed to return to school safely. So I urge you as the leaders of Revere to do what is best for our students and families and reinstate these educators immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrow. Counselor Rotundo?
Ms. Garrow, I don't mean to speak on behalf of the council. I'll let them speak, but my words will echo up to their sentiment. We have your back. We stand with you. We stand with those teachers. I'm a nurse and I know very well how important it is for children to connect with people that they feel comfortable with, with people that they love, and that means their teachers. I think what's being done here as a former union rep myself is appalling and I don't, I don't believe that we should be standing for it whatsoever. I hope the mayor, who is part of the school committee, can ask for reconsideration on the, on these three fine teachers and do so in a very steadfast manner. I thank you for bringing this to our attention and I wish you well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers and Counselor Genino?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a father of individuals who are members of four different labor unions in this Commonwealth, I've always felt that no employer or any other person should retaliate against people because of their right to speak out and when they do speak on issues that affect them. I think it's certainly in, in all of us in the city council, it's incumbent upon us as an elected governing body that represents the people of this community to make sure that everything is heard regarding this situation. And I have no idea what the particular situation was with regard to them and the union. But from what I'm hearing tonight, we have to stand up for these people. And they should, and if that's the case, that they just were involved in union activities, it's incumbent upon the us and this entire system to make sure that they are reinstated and continue to work that and, and have no mark put against them for their activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Genino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quick, I just wanted to see if, I know there's thirty attendees here and if we were in the council chamber, I'd ask for a show of hands. So if anyone attending is watching, can you please just use the raise hand function so we can see a show of hands of people that are here to support this motion? And we'll give it one minute. Thank you. That's all.
So there's eleven hands, twelve.
Oh, that's encouraging.
Fifteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty raised hands.
Thank you, guys.
Twenty-nine attendees. So I think that goes to show you. So I think obviously we're all in favor of this motion. I do want to say that, you know, I, I have received some calls, but yes, like, like Counselor Genino mentioned earlier, typically we refer to the school committee to act as the governing board when it comes to things like this. And I still have very much faith in the school committee. I know all the members and also Visconti is a former member. I think they do a fantastic job. So I think that maybe, you know, maybe our involvement can help. But I just want to express that I have faith in the school committee to do the right thing as well. And I would like to hear from both sides, but certainly we will stand with the teachers and I, I fully agree with this motion. All in favor of the, of the motion?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item fourteen, motion presented by counselors Genino and McKenna that the mayor be requested to forward the attached letter to the Revere School Committee in support of the Revere Teachers Association, further that this letter be read into the record.
Counselor McKenna. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor McKenna, do you want to speak first because I spoke with the clerk and I'll read the letter onto the record if you have any other comments?
No, I don't have any other comments. Just read the letter because I think it states everything we want, what we're saying. So, thank you.
So, Mr. President, if you allow, I'll read the letter onto the record.
Please do so.
I just want to be upfront, a lot of this letter was taken from the petition, so the files from the teachers and such. We use that as a base so you know where some of the content came from. But this was a letter written on June twenty-third on behalf of myself and Counselor Julian McKenna to the Revere School Committee, attention Mayor Arigo. Mayor Arigo, Counselor McKenna and I write to you today to urge you to support the RTA and the teachers of the Revere Public School System. On June fifth, two thousand and twenty, three City of Revere staff members at the AC Whalen School had their contracts non-renewed as retaliation for their union activity. They were punished for standing up for the rights of teachers and students in the two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty school year. We call on you and the Revere Public Schools to immediately reinstate these three educators. As a product of the Revere Public School Systems, I'm so proud of the professionalism of these teachers and of the RTA. Counselor McKenna has thirty-two years of experience in the Revere Public School System and was a representative and member of the union. No union member should ever be retaliated against for their union activity. It is a poor reflection of the City of Revere that we allowed this to happen and go on for so long. Katie Cochran, a fifth grade ELA and science and social studies teacher, has been within the district since two thousand and sixteen. She began her tenure in Revere working as a substitute in a number of buildings, including the Lincoln, the Garfield and the Whalen. Katie was ecstatic to begin her career at the Whalen for two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. She's a beloved member of her fifth grade team, hard worker and consistently striving to do what's best for her students. Victoria Devinson is a fourth grade ELA teacher and social studies teacher. She's been with the district since two thousand and fourteen. She's always been in the Revere Public School System for some capacity, formerly as a student and now as a staff member. She spent her first three years in the district working as an early reading intervention paraprofessional at the Whalen. She was given the opportunity to move to a classroom teacher role in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school year at the Whalen. In her role as a classroom teacher, she honored the opportunity to give back to her community and educate the youth of Revere. She spent the last three years being a devoted member of her fourth grade team, actively engaging to improve her practice and build strong relationships with her students. Heather Cantrell, a K-five school adjustment counselor, has been with the district since two thousand and sixteen, when she covered her maternity leave. She's worked at both Garfield, Middle and Whalen as a strong advocate for her students and the improvement of their mental health and school success. Known to the kids as Mrs. K, she's someone her students and the staff look for, for guidance and is always striving to do what's best for them. She is consistent, fair and sets clear expectations for her students, which is why she is a cherished member of the school community. Aside from being hardworking and dedicated, staff members, all of them have one thing in common. They took a stand against unfair practices and raised their voice as union members this year. They filed grievances, they spoke at rallies and were all outspoken in their concern. They protested against wrongful policies by administrators which hurt their students' learning. They went above and beyond in their everyday jobs and took a risk in advocating for working conditions and for learning conditions for their students. The action from the City of Revere is insulting, unacceptable, anti-union and bad for teachers and students. These three non-renewals must be overturned. These three deserve their jobs back. Their students deserve their teachers. Please join me in demanding the fair treatment of these three educators. Thank you for your time and I respectfully ask that you consider Counselor McKenna in my request. Best, Jessica Genino, Revere City Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
I don't have anything to say. I think everything has been said. Thank you.
Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorted.
You need a CT scan.
With that being said, we may all need a CT scan tonight, Counselor. With that being said, this is the closure of our, of our five-hour meeting and obviously it was extremely productive. You know, not everyone got what they wanted, but you saw some really healthy debates tonight and I really appreciate everyone's efforts and I appreciate all the attendees. We are going to be going into summer session, so the next council meeting will be on July twenty-seventh and by the grace of God, it will be in person at the council chambers.
Yeah, we just need to re-
We will, we will be able to meet in person at the council chambers. So actually, well, it looks like Madam Clerk needs to read the budget more times. Just give her an opportunity to.
You want to talk, talk to them?
Mr. President, while we wait, can I have a moment of personal privilege?
Sure.
Just want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July and remind people that fireworks are still very illegal. Thank you.
Good point. And Madam Clerk, did you have, did you have to re-read?
I apologize, counselors. When I did the formula, I didn't drag it all the way down to miss the last line item reduction that I had made in the amount of five thousand dollars for IT overtime. The new amount of the budget, the correct amount, was two hundred and nine million, five ninety-four, three twenty. Okay?
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
That has to be, that has to be a roll call. So Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And I have Counselor Zambudo on speaker. Counselor Zambudo voting yes. And Council President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. To reconfirm the FY twenty twenty-one budget, it passed at two hundred and nine million dollars, sorry, two hundred and nine, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Thank you, counselors.
That being said, motion to adjourn. We'll see you all on July twenty-seventh in the council chambers. Have a great night and happy Fourth.
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys.